Good evening and welcome to the Orange Public Library for the Orange City Council Debate. Tonight, we will hear from current council members and their challengers. The debate format will be as such. Each candidate will receive a question and have two minutes to answer. Following each candidate's two-minute response, there will be a four- to five-minute debate period around a question given to each candidate. The timekeeper will yell "Time!" when the two minutes or five minutes have concluded. Councilwoman Ethan, what inspired you to run for the Orange City Council?
Good evening, everyone. First, let me just say, I am currently the North Ward Councilperson. In nineteen seventy-two, I moved to the city of Orange, which is my home, and I've been here over forty-something years. Me and my husband bought our first home in Orange. And as I moved to Orange and I looked around and as I visited the communities, I got very involved in the school district and what was happening to our students because I had three young men that were in school, and I wanted them to get the best education possible. So I was really involved in the school district, the PTA, the PTOs, the District-wide PTO, making sure, meeting with the superintendent, talking to our teachers and making sure they had what they needed in the school district. And all of the after-school programs and everything that happened, none of them were in the North Ward. So as I traveled this journey and saw that everything that came about, nothing ever came to the North Ward. So I decided in two thousand and two that I was going to run for councilperson to give the North Ward a voice. We needed to be at the table to get some of the benefits, the opportunities. Our kids need the same education as the rest of the city. So I chose to run for council to make the North Ward a better place for our students, for our residents, and make it a better community as a whole. So that's why I ran for councilperson. I've worked diligently to put the North Ward on the map, and that's why I'm focusing on the North Ward tonight. I work for the whole city. I try to help the residents all throughout the city, but my main focus is the North Ward, to make sure that we get our fair share of the pie.
As you are aware, the purpose of City Council is legislative. What new policies would you introduce as a council member?
As you all probably know, I'm running for my sixth term as a councilwoman. So I've developed a lot of legislation through the years. And the purpose of the council is to legislate. We're supposed to legislate the policies that govern the city, our police, our fire, and the whole town of Orange. It is the administration's job to take care of the administration problem, administrative issues. We do not put the budget together, but we monitor the budget and we approve the budget. That comes through the administration. So the budget process gets to us. A lot of times, it's not on time. Sometimes it's well into the year before we get it, but eventually, we get a budget. And it's the council's job to go through that budget and see what needs to happen, see if we can have any, do any cuts to reduce the taxes or whatever it needs to be, but we ultimately approve the budget. And we legislate policies. Some of the policies I've legislated, I just legislated a couple of years ago that I found out that in our apartment, when I came to Orange, each rental got one parking space. Through the years, and I don't know what it was, but the landlords decided that they were to use the parking lots as a moneymaker, so they were charging the residents to park their cars. So I legislated that each apartment should get one parking space at no cost. But the issue becomes, how do we enforce that? How do we make sure it happens? And we have to depend on our city attorney's office to make sure that those policies are adhered to. So that's one of the things I did. I legislated so many things through the years, I can't recall them all, but whenever there's a need, as you know, I, we legislated the ABC laws. We started legislating that the taverns should close at two o'clock, which means at one forty-five, they prepare for closing. Some of them wanted to stay open at four-thirty and five-thirty in the morning, but we legislated that so that that did not happen. And we legislated some of the things that cover the streets. I legislated some of the things that, the closing of our streets and the parking times and some of the things that would impact our residents as a whole. So I'm for the people. I work for the people. They know where I live. I've been in that house for forty-something years, so everybody, it's like a family in the North Ward. We know each other, we can talk to each other. They can come to my house, ring my doorbell, and I'll either, I'll go, if they call, I go to their house just to see what the issues are so I can take care of them.
What budgetary concerns do you have?
Well, the budget in Orange is always a concern. First of all, we never get it on time. And then we have to get it passed by a certain date. And we have to look at all the aspects. We have to look at what, how are we holding people accountable for the money that they're spending? Are they spending it wisely? Are they spending it on the things that benefit the residents? And how do we work in there somehow to cut some of the things that are not necessary, which is a hard thing to do? Remember, as a legislator, the council cannot cut personnel. We can cut dollars. But we do not control the personnel, we do not control the hiring or the firing, we do not control the raises or whatever happens. But we can cut salary lines so that personnel has to be cut. So that's some of the things that always troubled me, that we go through the budget, but there's usually not a lot of fat in there. I know people think people are spending money willy-nilly and that we are not watching it, but we do watch the budget. We just, we get a budget report every month and we go through it and see. We go through the bill list to make sure that there's no spending that's not being accounted for. So we do look at the budget and all those issues. And we legislate whatever we can to make things better.
What is your education background?
I have a BS in Communications, and I have a certificate from the government, a certificate from Rutgers in Government Relations. So I have a four-years college degree. And I was planning to go back for a master's, but as I said, I always tell, when I do careers, I always tell people. I graduated high school in nineteen sixty-three. I finished college in nineteen ninety-three. So that means I was determined to get a college degree. So I worked on it over thirty years until I finally graduated from Caldwell College with my degree.
Councilwoman Ethan, do you believe all elected officials should attend the classes offered in Rutgers University that will allow them to become better public servants?
Yes, I do. That's what I did, and I attend any class that's relevant that they offer there. Unfortunately, the downside is Rutgers no longer offers the courses in Government Relations. Somehow or another, that whole department, they had a whole department that was dedicated to Government Relations. Somehow, they disbanded. So you have to catch the courses as they travel along, around the state. They might have a course in financial planning and budget in one city. Then they have another course in another city at a hotel. But as far as Rutgers, as far as I know today, they don't really offer those courses where you can get a certificate. When I became councilwoman, they did, so that's why I went to Rutgers. I drove down to Rutgers University in New Brunswick almost every Saturday taking those courses.
Do you own a home in Orange?
I own a home in Orange. I bought my house in nineteen seventy-two, and I've been in it ever since because I believe that children need stability in their life. They need to have a home that they can call home and not move around. So me and my husband invested in that home and we'll, and I'm still there. My husband passed away in nineteen, in two thousand and fourteen, but I'm still there. My kids have moved away, but I'm still there. I, if what, just, I really love Orange. I love my community, I love my house, I love where I live. So I have enjoyed living here. I have no complaints.
Councilwoman Ethan, have you been actively involved in voluntary organizations in the community? If so, please identify them and a role you have played.
I've done a lot of volunteer work. In fact, when my husband, he used to say, I was out, out of the house so much, he would say, "Do you live here?" But I was always attending a meeting. I was PTO president, PTA president. I was District-Wide PTO president. I ran the ABC Board for eight years, the Planning Board for eight years, eight to ten years. I'm a trustee at my church. I'm the president of the Flower Club at my church. I was a unit, former unit commissioner for Boy Scouts. And there's probably some I've left out, but I've always volunteered my time to make sure that I'm involved. And I don't go to meetings just to go to meetings. I go because we have to accomplish something. And we have to work together to accomplish the things that's going to unpack the kids and so I do a lot of volunteer work.
Are you permitted to a yearly survey of families, students, community residents, faculty, and staff about what they see as major strengths and the shortcomings of the City Council? If so, are you committed to publicly sharing the results?
I certainly am. I've been talking about that for years, that we need to do a survey to find out what our communities, our residents really think of the city of Orange and what type of job we think we are doing as council. But we haven't put that together. Hopefully, that will come in the future because I think it's important. I can't, I can't service you if I don't know what you're looking for. I know what I'm looking for, but I need to know what my community needs, and I'm there to support them. So I think the survey would help us get on the right track and do some good things for the city of Orange to move it forward and work together.
If you are selected by voters, what are your priorities for the city of Orange Township? And why, why and how did you select these issues?
Well, I'm going to be a little selfish right now. Because I am the North Ward Councilwoman, my priority right now is to get Cleveland Street School back on track. We need to bring my kids home. My babies need to come home. So I'm, that is my number-one priority, is that we open Cleveland Street School in the next year. We need to get a new construction company, and we need to get working so we can bring those babies back home. And that's why I say I'm a little selfish. I know the rest of the city has a lot of issues that we're working on. And I have a, and as you know, across from my house, there was a burned-out building that sat vacant for years. We finally got a owner, someone bought it. They're getting ready to develop that property. So I want to oversee what they do over there and make sure it's something that's going to better our community and that the residents that live in there learn to appreciate our communities. And we have a lot of issues, and someone talked about crime. But I look at crime in a different way because our police department has done an excellent job keeping crime down in the city of Orange. I mean, you can walk the streets, you can feel safe, you see the cops, the cars all over the place. So that's really not an issue for me right now. I want to keep it stabilized and make sure that they stay on their toes and do what needs to be done. And I do a lot of walking in my community, so I know a lot of the hotspots of what's happening here. And my residents are good about calling me all times in the night, telling me what's going on and what they need help with. And then I send the police and they respond. But that's one of the main issues, is quality of life. But we all got to work at it. It can't be just the council, the mayor. It's got to be all of us, the community people, the residents. We all got to work at it. If you see something, say something. And I was told recently that if somebody stole your car, if you reported it stolen, you are a snitch. So that's why you have these people running around here with cars and committing crimes with stolen cars because our people is afraid to speak up. They're afraid to fight. They're afraid that somebody is going to retaliate and do something to hurt them. But we got to learn how to support each other, talk about what's happening in our communities, and come together, unify, unify. We got to work together to make this Orange, Orange the city that we want it to be. Our school district, I have to give kudos. We are now a blue-ribbon school district. Blue ribbon. Our STEM school is one of the top high schools in the state. We've come a long ways. As I said, I've been here. I, this is my, I'm running for my sixth term, and we have seen the school district progress through the years. Former Superintendent Lee and our current superintendent, Mr. Fitzhugh, have worked very hard to make sure the kids get what they need and the programs that our former superintendent brought to Orange we never saw before. We have an ROTC group now. That's phenomenal. So we are on the move so we can invite people to move to Orange because the school district is doing what they need to do. The teachers are committed, are committed, the principals are committed, and our superintendent is committed to this district. So for that, I say thank you.
How would they impact the municipal budget?
Repeat that question.
How would they impact the municipal budget, the issues?
Well, right now, the issues that I have wouldn't impact the municipal budget at all because we want clean streets, paving of streets, and a lot of the things that we are doing, like paving, we're getting money from the state. We're getting a lot of grants to support programs on the city of Orange, and we're putting those grants to work. We got Green Acres who's supporting and putting money into our parks. So most of the issues that I have would not impact the budget. And the budget is always going to be an issue. Taxes is always going to be an issue. And if I could wave a magic wand, I would, I would reduce everybody's taxes so that people can stay in their homes, that they can live, they can survive, provide jobs. And that's one of the main issues, is getting our young people jobs. How do we put them to work? How do we make them responsible? How do we hold them accountable and make sure they go to work? How do we teach that in our schools? How do we teach that in our homes? To let our kids know they got to get a good academic education to get a good job and make good money.
How would you implement your priority legislatively?
Well, my priorities, I've already implemented legislative as far as the school is concerned. And we've legislated some of the issues because I'm on the Planning Board for the city. I legis, we do some of that in the Planning Board meetings. Legislation governs a lot of things. I've implemented some things on, in my ward to slow down the traffic on High Street. We put, I had the county put in higher strips, we put in better signs, we put in the crossings so that the kids could cross. And I always say, anything you do in the city of Orange, we are not an island. You have to build relationships and you have to build partnerships. You have to be collaborative because the county can do a lot for us. We just have to be sitting at the table to demand what we need for our city and the support. So far from me, they have been very cooperative. Like, we have Orange Park over there. We need to make sure they keep it clean. Our officers don't patrol Orange Park, the sheriff's officers do. But we got to make sure that we're telling them what we need, we're asking for things. I sit on the, as a liaison with the mayor once a month with all these cities in the SS County, and they talk about things, and I make sure that I represent my mayor on that, with those mayors. And so when they bring up stuff, I say, "Where's, raise my hand, we need it for Orange. We need it for Orange." And that's how I was able to get the insight to bring motor vehicle services to the city of Orange with the mobile, mobile motor vehicle truck during COVID- nineteen because nobody could get to motor vehicle, the lines was long, you had to get an appointment. But we provided that service in St. Matthew's parking lot. People could come out and think we did it three times so people could get what they need for motor vehicles, not have to worry about going to a motor vehicle agency and telling them they can't come or they have to stay. So we try and make sure, or I try and make sure that we bring things to the community that benefit the resident so that we have the same things as everybody else in all the urban communities and all the suburban communities. So that's what I work hard at.
What is your understanding of the tax levy and how many are there?
There are three tax levies. SS County, one for the county, one for the school district, and the municipal tax levy. Now, when we do the budget, you have to understand now, if the school district asks for additional money or increase in the funding that we provide, that might include, that might increase your taxes, but that's not the municipal and that's not the county. Because more than likely, most of the time, the county doesn't increase their levy from us because they make a lot of money in different things that they have going on. So they were very well-funded, so they don't increase their tax levy to the cities. I just wish they would give us more money. But the school districts, every now and then, they ask for another increase, and we have to provide it because it's for the children. And we want our children to have the best. We don't want to deny them. So if your taxes are increased because it's a levy from the school district, then there's nothing we can do about it. But we try and keep our municipal taxes at a minimum. But keep in mind, with COVID- nineteen, we all took a hit, a big hit. Everybody, we were trying to get the FEMA money to fill some of those gaps and refund some of them. We got the CARE Act money that was given to the city to help with the things that were happening. And, but we all took a hit during COVID- nineteen. And we have to raise ourselves from that and move on and somehow absorb those expenses so that it does not become a burden on the taxpayers. And that's what we're working hard to do.
What is the impact on the municipal budget and the residents in the city of Orange Township?
Well, the impact is based on, and I'm not going to quote numbers because it's based on the amount of funding we get, how much the levies cost us, and what we need to do for the city. So there isn't a real cut number because we won't know that until we go through the budget. And then that's when we find out what the tax, what the levy will be for the taxpayers. So if you're talking numbers right now, you're just guessing because there is no clear fact because we haven't done the budget yet. So we can't tell you what the impact is going to be. I would hope that it would be zero percent. But we get, we've gotten there a couple of years, but we haven't done it in the last couple of years. So we're hoping this year, maybe we can stay at zero percent.
Councilwoman Ethan, what is your election platform?
My election platform is to work collaboratively with the School Development Authority to complete Cleveland Street School, to work with the developer to make sure that there is a nice development going over in the North Ward, to work to find creative ways to decrease and stabilize taxes, to bring some industry into Orange, to talk to the state about giving us more money, and to work to make sure that our school district stays a blue-ribbon school district, to make sure our kids are getting the education they need. And the most thing I'm really working on is educating our kids at the elementary school level to get rid of the violence, the guns, the illegal drugs, to educate them on what's going to happen, to keep them out of their youth house, to keep them out of prison, and make them citizens. That's going to help our communities move forward and that they can be a role model for another young person, to make sure that they are educated. I work in a school district now, which is one of the things I do enjoy very much with the kids every day. I love children. I love, because they're so innocent. They're learning from the adults, some bad things, some good things, and we need to learn to be better role models. So that is my platform to make sure that our children, one day, they have to take care of me. So I want to make sure that they're educated, they're strong, and we got to work hard to be a role model for them. So that is my platform and make the city of Orange a place where anybody would want to live. But we got to embrace people, we got to embrace our communities, we got to embrace our cultures, we got to embrace the people that don't look like us. But we got to work together and educate them so that we all work together and not have one area against this area. So we all got to come together as a group and make Orange a better place for all of us to live and make our streets safer and work with our police officers, work with our firemen, and learn to thank them once in a while for the jobs that they do. I mean, we do have a lot of issues, but I'm willing to work hard and work through them. And I do work hard every day. Sometimes my kids tell me I work too hard, but that's just my nature.
Okay, Councilwoman Ethan, at this point, do you want to have any questions, Councilwoman?
What? I'm a dear, jealous, scared, you shit the room. So Councilwoman Ethan, I, I have to say this. I, I was not aware that the North Ward Debate, and I know there's no time for that, because nobody else is saying it, but anyway. I wasn't aware that you're debating tonight. And what has struck me is the lack of attendance from the competitors. It is probably my very first time seeing you in this election. I had to set aside my reservations and come back in here, tuck my E-dope in my pocket and say, hey, you've been in office for this many years, what can you have to offer? And I have to say, my one takeaway is that you, at least in your presentation, appear to be well-formed and present. I can see why your constituents continue to vote you into office with a consistency here. My one question has to do with the changing of the tide, the apparent shifts that are happening in Orange. We are now moving away from low income, we're now moving away seemingly on a slow pace, but it's happening. What is your forecast based on the recent changes here in Orange, given your long history and position at your
And before I answer that, let me just talk about the North Ward a little bit. When I moved to Orange, and I'm just going to digress a little bit. We were in the, and we were working in the school system because I got involved because my sons were there. And it was six parents, six, that made the changes because we couldn't get no participation. And we did everything that we could to get the North Ward residents and the parents to get involved in the school district. But for some reason, I always say, they would stand on the corner, they would talk to each other and complain, but they wouldn't come out and voice their opinion. So I'm just going to do this real briefly. So I decided, I was reading one of my teaching, my educational books, and it said, "Well, let's get the kids involved" because parents will flock to see their kids. And if you notice at our board meetings, if the kids are performing, you have parents there. Soon as the kids perform, what do the parents do? They get up and they leave. So we started, so I started at Cleveland Street School. Every PTO meeting, we would have a grade level present. So the teachers would prepare, and we would have standing-room-only. Kids perform, and then we would have our PTO meeting. Once the kids perform, all the parents got up and left. So we tried something different. We'd had the kids performing at the end of the PTO meeting. So we had standing-room-only parents. So we had standing room only parents. We got to get our points across. We got to get to talk to the parents. The principal got to pre- present what her expectation was. And then they were, we had a captive audience then because they were going to stay there until they saw their kids perform. So that's how we sort of engaged the community. But if you don't have the kids performing, now I'm only talking about my ward, you know, you're not going to get that type of participation that you would. Well, the attendance in most of the Orange meetings are low anyway. I don't know why. But I'm going to get back to your question. And you want to repeat that one more time because I got so caught up in what I was saying. What was your question?
So the question had to do with, given the recent changes, the shift.
Oh, you, the shift in the, the residents or?
In, in the residents and in the hous- the, the.
The housing?
The housing, you, you're facing new energy, new direction in Orange. There's been a shift. I've been here for fifteen years. There's a notable shift.
A notable shift. But you know, some years ago, each city was supposed to have so much affordable housing. And then the government disbanded it. They got rid of it because the urban commu- the suburban communities were allotting their affordable housing to the urban communities. So they felt that was unfair. So they disbanded that whole group. And when they did that, a lot of developers now don't want to do affordable housing. They want to do market rate. Like, most of our buildings, like senior buildings, they have some subsidized and then they have market rate. So just an example, the building that they're getting ready to build, of course, from my house, we're asking for ten to twenty percent affordable housing. Because when they do their presentation, it's all market rate. And the market rate housing is drawing a crowd from New York, Brooklyn, New York City. Like Tony Galenta Plaza, if you go through there, most of those people are from out of the City of Orange. Because the City of Orange, the residents cannot afford the rent that they're charging. So as a city now, we have to work on to make sure that these landlords understand that they have to have so much affordable housing for the residents because our residents feel like they're pushing them out. And they are, because they can't afford to pay the rents that they're charging. So we need to maintain and make sure our residents stay. So as a council, we need to start focusing on, how do we stop the shift? What do we need to do to make sure that our residents feel that they can maintain? One of the things I had suggested, uh, to the mayor, which I thought was a good idea, when a house goes into foreclosure, and you know the bank forecloses all the time. Once the house goes into foreclosure, the bank is vacant. It sits there for months. The pipes disappear. The house is destroyed. So I said to, why don't we talk to the banks? And if I own a house and I can't afford it, and you put me in foreclosure, why don't you let me stay there, pay rent that I can afford until you find a buyer? That way, your house stays intact. Nobody steals you the pipes, and you can sell it on the market. You don't have to do a whole lot of renovation. But of course, that fell on deaf ears. But that would have been a good way to keep our residents into their homes. It's vacant anyway. You're not getting any rent. So why not let the residents stay there? They're the homeowner. Say, you know what? We're going to foreclose, but guess what? You can stay here if you would decide you want to pay rent. And maybe eventually, you can afford to buy the house back. So there is a major shift, and we've seen it. But we have to figure out how to stop it, and we haven't gotten there yet. Does that answer your question?
It doesn't, it doesn't. I think I, 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 I wasn't.
I think more of your question was the financial outcome of like, you get in, the city's going from what seemed to be a lower or more affordable market to now like.
She didn't respond to that.
Huh?
She responded.
Oh.
I think there's some, there's some economics here that, that go for and against some of the shifting that's happened. I don't necessarily see it as a negative thing because there hasn't been a reduction in the number of affordable units in the City of Orange. It's just that all of the new buildings, which were not residences before, but commercial or abandoned properties, are now market rate.
Right.
So I'm not sure if the outcry of, we're being pushed out, is really a fair one or just one of aesthetics. It appears that there's no allotment for affordable housing, but if the stock hasn't reduced, you are, you have lost anything. To your point regarding landlords, yes, there needs to be, in regards to affordable housing, keeping those, I, those units that are in stock, viable units, not rat infested, not subpar, not, not as valuable or aesthetic decreasing as the new stuff, but also a, a, a direction to, let's not try to climb into market rate with affordable housing earmarked on it. You have to maintain that the stuff. So I feel like there needs to be some, a, some level of address in terms of how much stock we actually have that's affordable. And if it's been gone down or gone up, I think it's remained roughly the same. My second question, because I want to.
Well, let me just expel it, and you, because you mentioned something about rat infest. One of my initiatives, I get to know the owners of the buildings in my ward. So when something happens, like code enforcement can only do so much. They can come in, they find, they write summonses, they take them to court. But sometimes I think the judges are a little lenient because they should like post the final. Every day they don't finish them. So I don't have a problem with calling the owner. I write letters to the owners. Sometimes when the tenant called me because I have most of their cell phone numbers, I will conference the tenant on with the owner so they can hear full chat what they're trying. Sometimes they get a little upset with me about doing that, but I try and hold them accountable for the buildings. If it's your building, you need to maintain it. And if I need to, I will go to the building myself and I will meet with the owner there, the code enforcement, and we all go through the process, and I'll demand some things of them. Normally it works, so they get to know me real well, and they answer my calls and they try and. So as far as, and we try, and the health department does a good job of trying to abate the, the, um, rodents and all of that. But certain things you can't put down now because all of the dogs and the pets we have. And if somebody pet eats something poison and it dies, then they're going to sue the city. So they have to be very careful where they place the poison for the rodents. And it has to be strategized so that nobody pets, nobody's pet get a hold of it, and we have a lawsuit on our hands. And I agree with, uh, I think we had a, a concern about the dogs in the park. I think each park should have a dog run where people walk their dogs and they're not all over the park, and they need the pooper scoop. And the hardest thing, and one of them, like she asked about mine, my biggest concern is the amount of time it takes us to get from A to B. Like, we want pooper signs. It takes us six months to get them. I feel they should be in stock somewhere. If we want a sign to curtail something, it takes so long for us to get moving on something. I made Bradford Street a one-way, and I'm still waiting for them to paint the end of it so that it doesn't look like a two-way street. That's been almost six months.
Why do you think that is?
Because what COVID happened, it rained a lot, it snowed. They can't do it when the ground is wet.
Did we pay them all of COVID?
You said what?
Did we pay them all of COVID?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. But certain things you can't do when the weather is bad and when it's raining and snowing. And I understand that because it doesn't stick, and then it way off real fast. So that's their logic. But when the weather is nice, I'm on the phone saying, well, when are you going to do it? We'll do it tomorrow, and then it rains tomorrow. But they'll do it eventually. But I think my residents sometimes feel like we don't do things in a timely manner, but it's not us per se. We just have other people that we have to wait on to fill that gap and do the process. I was going to get a paint can and go and paint it myself, but that wouldn't look right either. So I've done that a lot of times. I'll paint it graffiti off. I, I had almost every color painted in the trunk of my car, paint graffiti off of my signs and off of my telephone boxes and my, just to make sure the ward looks nice. I even volunteered to paint the, got in front of the guy's store to get the graffiti off, but he did it himself. Because I told my, my, my merchants, if you have graffiti, you, we will paint until they get tired. And they do get tired. Then they don't put any more graffiti there. But you had another question. I'm sorry I cut you off. What was your other question?
I just, I just, I think as a longstanding resident of Orange, I, I do understand that things take a very long time to happen. And I don't know if it's a level of comfort, you know, the check comes anyway, you're going to get paid regardless, you're in a hierarchy. But I don't know how, as a resident, I can hold the salaried employees of this town accountable for their job function. And I, I, I walk a fine line for the eleven years to get offense, to get someone to address. Remember at council meeting, my whole block showed up. We were trying to figure out what, what on earth happened. I don't know what else to do, short of jumping around and screaming, and I've, we've had neighbors that did that and they got nowhere. How do you keep your residents engaged in the face of apathy from those that get pity, provide a service for them?
By being present. They know where I live. They call me on the phone. I go out and I check things out for myself. I don't rely. Then if I figure I can't do it, I have code enforcement or the directors meet me there. I mean, I call a meeting in a minute. Meet me here. Let's see what we can do. And normally, and then if that doesn't work, I call the mayor, and I lean on him pretty heavy. So it happens. Now, what ward are you? Are you in my ward?
No.
Oh, okay.
We would have been acquainted by now. No, not anymore.
But I try to make sure that if there's a need, I'm there, and that's how they know my face, you know? Somebody said to me that I was, that guy was in a beauty shop earlier, the lady said, "That's Ms. Eason." And I'm looking, I was asking to be a tissue. Well, she said, "Ms. Eason, everybody knows you." She said, I said, "Yeah, but I want to, I don't know all of the faces," you know? But, you know, they know me. I speak and say hi. And then when I leave, I say, "Who is that?" But, you know, I try to make sure I help people, you know, I help my seniors to make sure they're safe and they're okay. I go shopping, I take them food, food boxes, so I'm always doing something. I'm a type A personality, so I can't sit still. I get bored very easy. You have another question?
You have more questions?
Will you be here all night? I got, I'm, I'm dead.
No, you're not in my ward.
But that's a, that's a cool question.
I'm only kidding. You got to laugh every once in a while. Yes, sir.
You're doing a, a making job, so everybody loves you. After all this time, you have a seat. If, after two weeks, right, the, the mayor we have ran out, deciding not to run, people choose you to run half a mayor, would you?
No. I have no aspirations of a higher office at this stage in the game. Uh, I'm happy with what I do. I love my ward. I love the people. And I want to stay representing them and make sure they have a voice and protect whatever I can and make sure everything is distributed equally through all of the wards in this city. It's not my aspiration to be mayor. Uh, I hope at some point, if Mayor Warren does not run, we find a good replacement, somebody that really cares about the residents and really to work collaboratively, collaboratively with everybody and is very personable. Because it is a, a unique personality in Be- I did run for mayor. I guess after my, um, I don't know, my second term? My third term? That's my son sitting back there, you know, he's listening to.
I'll have you know, he was playing on me earlier.
He was what?
No, I thought you were.
No, that's my son sitting in the back. Uh, I claim all your men, though. They all call me mom because I mother everybody. But no, I have no aspirations. Uh, when people ask me that, I said, "That ship has sailed." I, I, I'm happy doing what I do. As you know, I worked for the AT&T for thirty-four years and I retired. And I think in like nineteen ninety-eight as a product manager. And I always had, when I was in high school, I wanted to teach or be a secretary. So I retired and I decided I was going to go the alternate route to teach. But I substituted for some time because one of my friends say, "Oh, why don't you substitute to see if you really like it?" I did second grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, and I said, "Oops." I went a whole, a whole almost month and didn't do substituting because I had to get my mind together and make sure that I was in tune with the students and that I could fit into this new generation and learn their habits and ways. But then I went to the middle school, which is a little bit more mature, and I loved it there. And I, and then, but I decided, teaching is not for me. I'm not going to spend the time going back through college to get the alternate route and decide. And I, and the principal asked me to be the secretary in the school. So I worked in the school. I've been in the school district now twenty-two years. So I've been working all my life, but. And I love my job as a secretary and as a councilwoman, and this is for, I go to work every day. I love the kids. And I always tell them, when they're disrespectful or I talk to them, I go up to them and I say, "I could be your grandmother." And that brings a smile to their face because no matter what a child is doing, they always respect grandma. I don't know what it is about grandma, but kids will respect grandma. So I'd say, maybe it's my white hair, which I've been graced since I was eighteen. But, you know, they, and I, and they calm down. And sometimes the principal will say, "You go over there and talk to them because they listen to you." Because I talk to them and I treat them like my own, and I want them to be successful. And I tell them about being disrespectful to adults and how they're there to teach them and they need to get what they have in their head so that they can be productive citizens in this society. Because one day, they're going to want to do something, president, police officer. And they got, in order to do that, they got to stay out of the judiciary system and keep their records clean. Because that's not the place we want them to end up. Any questions? I want to thank you guys for having me. As you can see, I'm very passionate about my job. I take it very seriously.